Good afternoon. I want to welcome you to a special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners to hear appeal on a course certificate of appropriateness. With that, who's Bea- Bea Billel, you're going to lead this discussion and then...
Actually, I serve as the hearing officer, advising counsel.
Exactly.
It's yours.
All right. So, I guess the first... Which lawyers do we want to hear from first?
The appellant has the right to make an open... If you want me to, I'll just go through some of the rules.
Sure, right. There was somebody there, I just lost track of all of them.
That's fine. That's fine. The appellant, or both sides, are going to have three minutes to make an opening presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Then each side will have 20 minutes to make their... Present the evidence they want to, to the board. Whenever they're asking questions, if Ms. Blair is asking questions and Mr. Schwartz's counsel, that would be counted against her time.
Okay.
After those presentations are made and before they have a three-minute summation, but at that point in time, Mr. Davidson, who is the owner of the property, has a right to be able to participate, and he has up to 10 minutes to make a final statement if he wants to.
Okay.
And then we would conclude with the summation statements.
All right. And I think what will happen after we've heard from all of them, and I'll, Commissioner, keep it out, since this is yourself, turn it over to you to lead the discussion, all right? Okay, with that, the appellant is up first, and you have three minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm John Schwartz. I represent Jim and Erin McCutcheon, who live next door to the subject property. They share a driveway with the proposed house. We raise five issues in our appeal. First issue is that the Historic Preservation Commission abused its discretion by not considering the full size of the proposed house. The Historic Preservation Commission limited its review to consideration of the conditioned space. That was based in part on the chief appraiser of Cobb County provided an affidavit at the last hearing where they were saying that the county only considers conditioned space in assessing the fair market value of property, and that that's measured from the exterior of the exterior walls. Now distinguishing between conditioned and unconditioned space makes sense when assessing fair market value of a property, but whether a room is conditioned is not relevant to issuing a certificate of appropriateness. Instead, the applicable consideration of the code is how does the structure look from the exterior, from the outside, and that's based on Cobb Code 66-82 and 66-85. The planning division manager stated that the Cobb's definition of square footage refers to heated and cooled space at the HPC hearing, which he called habitable space, but again, that's not comparing apples to apples for other historic properties because essentially what the other historic properties in this area, for example, don't have garages. So just to say that the county doesn't typically consider square footage of anything that's not habitable does not really put it in context of what's happening here where you have historic structures that are surrounding the proposed house, and those historic houses do not currently have garages. So if you're going to put a three-car attached 968-square-foot garage that you can see from the exterior, of course, the Historic Preservation Commission should consider the size of that garage and how it fits in with the surrounding community, and they expressly did not do that here. We're also contending that the Historic Preservation Commission abused its discretion by approving a certificate of appropriateness that did not... It wasn't the same as the submitted plans. So the submitted plans had... Was for a house that ranged somewhere between 4,494 square feet to over 6,000 square feet, depending on how it's counted, and I'll get into that with our architect, Alan Clark. But in this case, no matter how you count it, if you're counting from the exterior of the walls, even by the most generous interpretation to the applicant, it's still over 4,000 square feet, and they approved an applicant... The certificate of appropriateness says that it's based on the submitted architectural plans with the stipulation that the house be under 4,000 square feet. The plans are over 4,000 square feet. So they're approving something that's different than what the plans showed, no matter how you look at the plans.
Mr. Schwartz, sure.
Okay. Can I finish with one last sentence here? It's okay. I'll address it on the closing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to read back for 20 minutes, so I'm sure you'll address it then.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Debbie Blair on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. You are here today to consider whether the Historic Preservation Commission abused its discretion when it approved a certificate of appropriateness for Mr. Roland Davidson to construct a single-family home in the Concord Covered Bridge District. As directed by this board, the HPC considered Mr. Davidson's application applying the standard set forth in the Cobb County Code. Appellant again challenges this approval. He contends that the HPC made the wrong decision, but for different reasons. This challenge should fail. The HPC acted within its discretion and properly approved the application based on the facts it heard April 9, 2018, at its hearing. Appellant's appeal should be denied, and the HPC decision allowed to stand for the following reasons. First, the square footage of the proposed home is comparable to other homes in the district, and the entire scale of the dwelling was considered by the HPC. Second, the district is the proper area to consider, and to arbitrarily limit the area to any other size would be an abuse of discretion. Third, the HPC did not abuse its discretion when approving the style of the home proposed by the David application, Davidson application. And fourth, all of the certificate of appropriateness submittal criteria were provided. Following Cobb County Code, the HPC reviewed evidence showing the new construction will be compatible in design, scale, building materials, setback, and landscaping of other homes in the district. The standard of review to be applied today is whether the HPC abused its discretion when it approved the COA. It is not whether you agree with the decision or would have made a different decision, but whether there was any evidence before the HPC to support its decision. The decision was proper, was supported by evidence, and within the discretion and authority of the HPC. I ask that you uphold the commission's decision.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Alan's called Jerry White. He's a witness.
nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you introduce yourself to the Commissioners?
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Jerry White. I'm consulting city planner. I reside and work at 1225 Rucker Road, Alpharetta, Georgia 30004.
Can you briefly tell us about your experience with historic preservation?
Yes, sir. I have both academic and professional credentials in the field. I've been a practicing planner since 1985. I have served on a local historic preservation commission. I have worked to advise different historic preservation commissions. I've also written several historic preservation ordinances as well as design guidelines.
Approximately how many certificates of appropriateness have you been involved with, either as a member of an HPC, as a consultant to a local government, or helping an applicant?
Probably three dozen, maybe more.
All right. I want to talk about the size of the proposed house. What portion of a structure should HPCs consider when deciding whether to approve a certificate of appropriateness?
It should consider the entire structure, everything that's an external exterior environmental feature.
Is that customary in the field of historic preservation?
Yes, it is.
Is there any basis for distinguishing between conditioned and unconditioning space when deciding whether to approve a COA?
No, there are not. Most preservation ordinances have nothing to do with the interior of the home. Everything has to do with how it looks on the outside.
If you added a garage to an existing house, would that need a COA?
Yes, it would.
Is there any reason to assess the impacts of a garage differently if it's part of a new construction as opposed to adding on to existing construction?
No, they're both material changes in appearance.
Other than the COAs that have been issued in this case, have you ever seen part of a structure that is visible from the exterior but ignored by the HPC because it was not conditioned or habitable space?
No, I haven't. I think that's unprecedented.
And have you seen the proposed site in this case?
Yes, I have. I've visited the site.
Okay, and you've looked at it from Concord Road and the Covered Bridge Road below it and the Silver Comet Trail?
Yes, all three of them.
Okay. And would the entire exterior portion of the house be visible from those areas?
I believe so. From each of those three vantage points, you would see some, maybe all of it in certain cases, but every part of the dwelling, proposed dwelling, would be visible.
And is it your opinion that the protruding exterior walls should be considered by the HPC in assessing the impact of this house and how it fits in with the surrounding area?
Yes, they definitely should be considered. They're external or exterior environmental features that affect the landscape of the historic district.
And is it... Is your answer the same with the garage workshop and screen porch?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are you familiar with what's referred to as the intact historic area?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do you see the appellant's exhibits in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Can you turn to Exhibit 17, which the Commissioners also have? It's a book that was submitted this afternoon. Can you explain to the Commissioners what the intact historic area is?
This map was, I believe, a part of the nominating report that was submitted, and I believe it was the Jaeger Company who prepared this, and they analyzed what was out there by way of historic structures, and they narrowed down the area that is, quote, "intact" or that has integrity as historic resources to this area outlined in yellow.
Is it your understanding that all the existing structures in the intact historic area are historic?
Yes, I believe that's the case.
And in your opinion, is the intact historic area eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places?
Yes, and I indicated in the last meeting that was my testimony as well.
Would the proposed house as design impair that eligibility?
Yes, it would.
Could a new house be constructed on that site without impairing the intact historic area's eligibility for listing on the National Register?
Yes, it would be a much different house from that proposed by the Davisones.
And were those comments addressed in your markups and memo that were submitted to the HPC in this case?
Yes. My April 6 memo with illustrations indicated how there were issues with the architecture and so forth.
Would impairing the intact historic area's eligibility for listing be a substantial adverse effect on the historic significance and value of the historic district?
Yes, in my opinion, it would.
Have you read a transcript of the April 9 Historic Preservation Commission hearing?
Yes, I have.
What is your opinion on how the Historic Preservation Commission addressed the meaning of the term "immediate neighborhood"?
In my view, the commission completely ignored that. They tried to sidestep that issue and continue to say that the only geography that they had to consider was the boundary of the historic district, and of course, immediate neighborhood is specifically referenced in the Cobb County Code.
So from your read of that transcript, did it seem like the HPC refused to distinguish between historic district and any other area?
Yes, it seemed very clear, particularly the chairman's continuous points about how the historic district was the only boundary that they were concerned about, and also testimony from the preservation planner for the county, which said that there wasn't any other thing to consider besides the historic district boundary.
And given that the two different terms are used in the code, immediate neighborhood in 6685A and historic district in 66-82 and 6685B, is it your opinion that it would be an abuse of discretion to refuse to consider any area that's different than the historic district when assessing whether to issue the COA?
Yes, I do believe that would be an abuse of discretion, in my opinion.
How would you distinguish between the use of the term "immediate neighborhood" and the use of the term "historic district" in this case?
To me, and we have talked, and you asked me to look at this exhibit, that is the so-called intact residential area, we've identified that as an appropriate... Something similar to what might be considered the immediate neighborhood. But I would also say that the smallest geography that you could consider for that would be the properties that are immediately adjacent to the subject property, and I would point out the county's own requirements where in their submissions they indicate that the architectural elevation should be considered in view of any structures that are immediately adjacent. So even though that term is not defined, I think the county has made it clear its intent that there needs to be some examination of immediately adjacent properties.
And have you seen the HPC's position paper where they state that 6685 is intended only to apply to COAs for existing buildings because it refers to, quote, "proposed material changes in the appearance"?
Yes, I've seen that.
What's your opinion on that statement?
I disagree with it. Everything is a material change in appearance, whether there's an existing structure or a proposed new structure. We're still dealing with the physical land involved and the landscape and those aspects of it.
And did the application rely on nonhistoric homes to show compatibility with the historic district?
Yes, the application itself had several photos of modern contemporary structures, and also the Preservation Commission continuously in their hearing referred to modern or contemporary, maybe not that word contemporary, but they referred to the more modern homes that were in the historic district.
And did it seem like that they were actually assessing the compatibility of this house based on the existence of those modern or nonhistoric structures and whether it fit in with those nonhistoric structures?
Yes, that seemed to be the exclusive basis of their determination, that it was compatible or consistent or in keeping with those modern contemporary structures.
And is that a proper standard?
No, in my opinion, it certainly is not. I don't know a case where modern structures that happen to be in a historic district, how they would be utilized for support of an action because they're not contributing to the purposes of the local historic district.
The COA's submittal criteria requires an applicant to identify projected undue economic hardship which would result from denial of a certificate of appropriateness. And on page 14 of the Historic Preservation Commission's position paper, the HPC contends that that criteria is inapplicable to new construction because a denial of a COA would result in the inability to use the applicant's property in any way. Do you agree with that?
No, I don't agree. I noticed in the commission's position paper that they discounted that criterion and said, "No, the applicant did not provide this yet it's not necessary." That it's not necessary, but I would contend that it is necessary because property rights can be affected based on what the commission approves, and one size of a dwelling versus another could result in hardship, and so I think it's certainly relevant.
And so if they approve a... For example, they could deny the COA as applied for but approve it with the, let's say, improvements that you suggest in your memo, correct?
Well, we... You and I have talked about that a little bit. The commission's charge is basically to approve or reject, and if it rejects, it should give specific reasons for the applicant to come back and say, "These are the factors that we would suggest changing, and if you come back, we're likely to approve that." And my April 6 information was intended to help the commission direct the applicant to a dwelling that would have been compatible with the immediate neighborhood, the intact area, the purposes of the historic district.
Dr. White, if you were asked to decide whether the Cobb County HPC abused its discretion by approving the Davidson COA a second time, what would your answer be?
It would be that, yes, in my opinion, the Cobb County Historic Preservation Commission did abuse its discretion on a couple of accounts. One of them is that they did not... They clearly did not consider the immediate neighborhood, and that is specifically in the code to be considered, and both the position paper and the commission have tried to shy away from that, and it's an abuse not to consider that. That's one of their statutory charges. Another one is that I don't think that... I think the Board of Commissioners charged the Preservation Commission on appeal, on remand of this application, to consider other factors and resources customary in the field of historic preservation. I don't know that, other than my April 6 submission, I don't know that they had anything else that they considered there. Also, I don't believe they've considered... They abused the discretion in that they did not go back to the definitions of historic resources, particularly exterior architectural features, exterior environmental features, and material changes in appearance, and those are defined, and there's very specific things that the commission should look at, and they did not, and therefore, that to me is an abuse of their discretion when they don't consider what is supposed to be. And then finally, I would say, I was qualified as an expert in the last appeal hearing, and although the commission didn't ask for expert opinion, there was an expert opinion provided that it was not appropriate, and the commission, from my review of their meeting, they did not consider that whatsoever. There didn't seem to be any reference to it at all.
Thank you, Dr. White.
You're welcome.
Please stay there. The lawyer for the HPC may want to ask you a few questions.
Hi.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
In our Cobb County Code, one of the terms that we need to... That the HPC needs to consider when they're looking at properties issuing COAs for homes is "scale." When you hear the term "scale," what does that mean to you?
Scale to me is a combination of several factors. It means the height of the building, the building footprint, the width of the structure, and that all collectively would be scale.
So would you say that it's appropriate to say that scale could equate to the exterior shape of the building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have you ever... Have you worked with the Georgia Department of National Resources, the Historic Preservation Division, in approving properties for the National Register?
No.
Okay. I don't know if you saw this in the materials that were presented to you, but the district was presented to... Nominated to the Historic Preservation Division for approval on the National Register back in 2011. In 2012, there was a letter from the National... Or excuse me, the Historic Preservation Division that states that one of the reasons it does not qualify for National Registry is that there is a lack of historic resources in the district. How do you counter that?
Yeah, I noticed that in the position paper of the HPC, and the argument... I disagree with the argument that they... That what was nominated at that time and what I've said is eligible are the same thing. I think they're two different geographies.
And if you are listed... If... Excuse me, a property is listed as an individual listing, so the building itself is listed on the register, and then that district that includes that building is also listed on the register, what are the additional benefits of both?
There's really no additional or separate benefit. They're both intended to... In either path, they would comply with... They would be eligible for whatever incentives and so forth that are allowed, so it wouldn't make a difference.
And last question. Do you know how many historic homes are in the district?
How many historic homes?
Correct.
The record that I've reviewed, there seemed to be a lack of consensus on that. I heard four, I heard five, I heard six, read six and so forth.
It's four.
Okay.
It's four. No further questions.
Thank you.
Dr. White has another meeting after this. Unless anyone has... May have questions for him, he may leave.
Does any member of the board have any questions for Dr. White? Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have some questions. I believe that you might be able to answer them, though.
Yes, sir.
I believe it was Mr. Schwartz in his opening statement mentioned garages and whether they should be included or not included or whatever in the discussion as far as whether it's appropriate or not to have. Of those four or six homes, whatever there are historic, any of those have garages?
My understanding of the record, Mr. Commissioner, is that none of the others have any garages with the exception of one of them. I can't tell you which one it was, but it had a detached one-car garage that kind of looked like a carriage house, but there's no... There's certainly no three-car garages, and I don't think there's any two or single-car garages other than that one mentioned.
And then quickly on the Section 7 of the appellant's documents, on page 6, 7, 8, 9, it shows pictures of homes. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, sir. I reviewed that.
Could you look at that for me, please?
Which exhibit is that, John?
7. Section 7.
Application for COA?
No, it's Section 7, and what he handed out is his evidence.
Okay. Of your package here... Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
That's the applicant's exhibits in here.
You're asking about the modern homes that are in the applicant's exhibits?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, okay, let me look. Okay, I'm there now.
Yeah, yeah, those pictures. I'm just... I'm a little confused about what all these are and which ones are ones you consider historic or not, or which ones are in the district or the immediate neighborhood, because, you know, it seems to be a little bit confusing. So are the ones on 7, are these in the district?
I'd have to defer this to the applicant. They don't give a location here. I don't think they're in the immediate area. They could very well be in the historic district proper, but I don't believe they're immediately adjacent.
Okay, so these are picked... I guess in your opinion, I guess I can ask the applicant, but these are ones that are...
Chairman, if I may clarify?
Oh, please.
Yes, this exhibit is what is the application of the appellate.
Okay.
So it wasn't necessarily purported by the appellant.
So you're just...
He's just including their application of what they're referring to.
And so these pictures are homes that they are relying on to show compatibility. These homes are not in the intact historic area. They are in the larger historic district, but they're nonhistoric structures.
All right, thank you. I was confused on that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, and I'm looking, and I don't know what page it is in Mr. Schwartz's book, but in Section 66-82.
Tab 1.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Tab 1.
Tab 1, okay, because I'm looking at it in another location. It says, "The commission shall issue a certificate of appropriateness to new structures constructed within designated historic districts. These structures shall conform in design, scale, building materials, setback, and landscaping." When... In your testimony, when asked what "scale" meant to you, you made no reference to square footage. So I'm kind of curious as to the discussion of the garage and not including the square footage. In your professional opinion, that never came up as a measurement of scale, which is what the code says, "scale."
I would say that it was... It's reasonably implied within "scale" because the way I defined "scale" was the height of the structure and the width of it, and then collectively, which would then mean a larger square footage, whether one-story or two-story, would be larger in scale, and a smaller square footage would be smaller in scale because it'd be smaller width and smaller height.
That's not how I... That's not what I heard you say, but, okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that.
Commissioner Burrow?
In the appeal, appellant's position paper on page 8... In the, in the appeal, appellant's position paper on page 8, there's a map with arrows of eight structures within the historic area. And I was just wondering if we could get a visual of what those look like now, currently, compared to what, I couldn't, there, in the tab 7, that we were referencing before, on page 6, the Rough Mill House is in here, and it's one of the ones listed on here, but the others, it just says, "Within the Covered Bridge Historic District."
So if you go to Tab 2, that helps you, like what we submitted today?
There they are, yeah, Tab 2.
Okay, that's the Covered Bridge.
The next one was the first one, Rough Mill.
Oh, okay, I see, the Rock House, okay. Okay.
And if you look at the last one on Tab 2, to answer Commissioner Weatherford's question before about the garages, the Gann House is the last photo on Tab 2. That's the only historic house in the district that has a garage. It's not in the intact historic area, but it has a detached historic barn as a one-car garage.
If that's the carriage house you're talking about?
Yes. That is on Tab 2.
No, I see that, but I'm not.
It's not on that, because the Gann House is not in this intact historic area.
If you go to this map right here, it's down here at the bottom, it's part of the map, it's not on the color map, you're right. Down here in the bottom. Yeah, right.
So if you look at this picture right, is this all?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
This outline in red shows the intact historic area.
Right.
And essentially, that western and southern boundary follows Nikajack Creek. On the western boundary, it's just to the west of the creek, kind of between Nikajack Creek and Covered Bridge Road, and then the northern boundary is the Silver Comet Trail. But that's the intact historic area, so the Gann House is outside of that.
You're saying the Gann House is outside of that?
Yes, the Gann House is within the Covered Bridge Historic District, but it's outside of the intact historic area.
But your argument, if I understand it, is that only this area is what you should be considering?
Well, no. What we're saying is that under 66-85A, let me, let me make sure I'm getting this right. Under 66-85A, you look at the immediate neighborhood. And what we're contending is the immediate neighborhood is the intact historic area. Under 66-82 and 66-85B, you look at the historic district. So both are relevant, but there needs to be some distinction made between the two.
So you, so you're showing one outside of what your argument is?
Right.
Which is the Gann House.
So what I'm saying is, okay, the Gann House is part of the historic district.
So is all of them.
Correct. My point in showing the Gann House is that the only historic structure in this whole district that has a garage is the Gann House. So I don't want to sit here and make pretend that there's no garages on any historic structures. I'm acknowledging there's a garage on the Gann House, it's not in the intact historic area, it's a historic barn, one car, but it's there.
Okay.
Okay.
But even though it's not in the impacted area, you're just showing that as an example? Which, what is different than that in the applicant's number 7 showing homes in the historic area that are outside that area?
Well, the applicant is showing those homes for the express purpose of saying his house is compatible with this historic district.
Right, aren't you doing the same thing?
Right, and what we're, well, we're breaking it down, it's a little bit more than that. It's not just yes or no. So what we're saying is that under 85A, you have to look at how the design fits in with the exterior architectural style of the other structures in the immediate neighborhood. So for the immediate neighborhood and looking how the design fits in with the exterior architectural style of those, of the homes in the immediate neighborhood, we're saying, look at the intact historic area for that. Now, I'm not, I'm not specifically saying that it would have been an abuse of discretion to look at something other than the intact historic area, but what I'm saying is, there's two different terms in this code. One is intact historic area, one is the, well, no, one is immediate neighborhood, one is the historic district. And so what I'm saying is, there has to be, there's some difference, and because of that, even if it's, even if the immediate neighborhood is something different than the intact historic area, they have to acknowledge there's a difference and then make a determination of what is the immediate neighborhood? What homes are we looking at to assess how this structure fits in with the immediate neighborhood? And they just refused to do that, they said, there's, there's nothing that defines immediate neighborhood, so we can't look at anything other than the district.
I see. All right, I understand it much better.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm looking at your Exhibit A in the last page of your book. So we have, on your map here, the yellow highlight is what?
When you say Exhibit A, are you referring?
I'm commenting in your book.
One you gave us today.
This one, the last page.
Today, okay. 17?
Yes, Tab 17.
Okay.
What is the yellow line supposed to mean?
The yellow line is the boundaries of the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District.
Okay, but according to the map, so what you're saying is, on this map, you give us the dash line is what was proposed, but my understanding is what was proposed, that the board actually approved something bigger than was originally proposed.
Okay, all right, so then, then I may be mistaken on that. My underst, this is from the nominating report?
Okay, well, the only reason, the reason I'm asking is because, and then you're using this term intact historic area, where is that defined and who created it?
Okay, so the intact historic area, if you look on this map on 17?
No, I can see where it is on the map, but I want to know.
If you look at this legend on the top left, the legend defines it, the intact historic area.
But it's, but it's not a term that's in the code?
Right, it's not in the code. That's why what we're sugge, what I'm just suggesting that that is the immediate neighborhood in this case.
Okay, but, but here's, here's the other question I have. We've been told, and there's a letter in multiple places, it says that it was never given national historic registry listing. Yet, on this map that you have submitted here, it has an area that says that it's national register listing.
Okay, and so what that is talking about are specific properties are listed on the National Register.
Okay, but the way this, this document that you have submitted here makes it look like it's an area, because it's got a square with a certain type of line, and it's showing a box, an area. And so this, this map right here on, in Tab 17, I'm not really sure what it's supposed to be telling us, and half of what's on here, I'm not sure that it really exists.
Well, what, okay, so this map comes from the nominating report?
Right, but the nominating report was not approved.
No, the nominating report, okay, there's a, the nominating report was what Cobb County is required to submit to Georgia Historic Preservation Division when they propose designating a district as a historic district under state law. It's different than the National Register. So this nominating report was submitted to Georgia HPD back around 1985, and, and the nominating report, which was created by the Cobb County's contractor, they identified this area outlined in yellow as the proposed area to be created the local historic district.
But that's not what was created?
Is that true?
That is what was created in 1985.
And what there might be some confusion about is that later, because there's been reference to a letter, there's been reference to a letter in about 2011 or 2012, where Historic Preservation Division is saying it's no longer eligible for listing on the National Register. And what that's referring to is an area that's larger than the intact historic area, presumably, and I don't know for sure, but maybe it was still the entire historic district that was submitted for listing on the National Register, and the state said, well, it's no longer eligible because of, because of a lot of development that's happened in the district since then.
All right, so I guess my question is, because you keep using this term intact historic area, did the state, with the nominating document that you're saying this came from, did the state approve, and is there a document somewhere that uses the term impact historic area?
The only place that that is used as far as I know is this map, no.
So, so in other words, whatever was, has been approved, does not designate an area impact historic area, other than this map, which I understand?
Yes.
Went with the nominating documents, but it has not been approved?
Exactly, I'm not saying that this.
Well, I know, I mean, the problem is, you're using the term as if it's something that I can find it someplace, and that it's, that some people other than Cobb have approved this area is intact historic area, but it hasn't.
Right, but with respect, the first time I use that term, I'm saying where it comes from, which is from the map on the nominating report, and I'm being very clear that this is not some, you know, defined legal term, it's just that what we're suggesting as the appropriate immediate neighborhood. But there at least needs to be some, some immediate neighborhood.
Well, I know, but I just, in your presentation, it comes across as if this is an area that I could go look someplace and find, other than a nominating report, that I could find it and say, okay, these boundaries exist, approved by somebody else.
Right, and, you know, with three minutes of opening, it's hard to convey all the complexities in, you know, in a case like this, but I'm, you know, happy to, I, yeah, that's fine, point taken, that's fine.
I just think if we're going to use a term and use it as a basis to say whether something should or shouldn't be, it should be something that actually exists.
Well, he's made a proposal, whether we accept it or not, it's.
Well, no, I mean, I've just, my question, Mr. Chairman, was simply that, I, the only place I can find it is on this document, and, and I kept hearing you refer to it, and I just wanted to know where it came from.
Okay.
The other point that's more cogent is that the only terms we have used in code are immediate neighborhood and historical district.
Correct.
Those are the only terms that are in code that we can go back on as a reference. But I get what you're trying to do, are you?
And I understand, but I just needed to clarify where it came from.
You introduce the concept, and whether or not we accept it individually is up to us.
Right.
Okay, but I get your point.
Thank you.
Sure.
With that, I mean, was there any other questions for Mr. Weiss? That was the portion for the board.
Appreciate your time today, thanks for coming today, sir.
Mr. Schwartz, you have approximately seven minutes left in your presentation.
Appellant's call, Alan Clark. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do, swear that.
Okay, I'm handing you what's shown in Tab 3 on our presentation today. Is that the square footage of this house as you've measured it based on the plans that were submitted?
Yes, it is.
What experience do you have with the, with certificates of appropriateness?
So I was the past chair of the City of Decatur's Historic Preservation Commission for three years, and then before that, I was on the, the commission, just as a, as a commissioner, as a member. I have a master's degree in architecture, I'm a licensed registered architect in the state of Georgia, and state of Florida, state of South Carolina. So I've probably looked at, with the City of Decatur, I don't know, hundreds of applications, and then in my own personal practice over the years, probably 10 or 15 different jobs that I've looked at and drawn, designed.
And when you were reviewing applications for COAs, did the HPC always consider the impact of the entire exterior of a structure?
Yes, definitely.
Is that also true for the COAs you've been involved with on behalf of applicants?
Yes.
All right, so looking at Tab 3.
In this book?
Yes, well, I just handed you.
Oh, this?
The square footage.
Okay.
Okay, did you make these calculations based on the plans submitted by the applicant?
Yes, sure did.
And what would you consider to be the square footage of the proposed house?
I would probably go with the footprint, or the footprint if we're excluding the exterior walls, so 6535 or 6881.
Okay, and even if the Historic Preservation Commission was authorized to ignore unconditioned space, is there any possible way the exterior measurements of the conditioned space is 4,000 square feet or less?
No, no way.
Would the submitted plans have to be modified to conform to the COA's stipulation that the house be under 4,000 square feet?
Yes, I mean, it'd have to be redesigned.
Did you review the site plans and elevation submitted with the application?
Yes, I did.
Did the application include elevation drawings and scale showing relationship to structures immediately adjacent?
No, it was just the single building, it was not related to the other buildings around it.
And would such elevation drawings show the height of the proposed house in relation to the adjacent house?
No.
No, would they, if it was there, would it?
Oh, wait, say that again.
If the elevation, so the COA's submittal criteria requires elevation drawings and scale showing the relationship to structures immediately adjacent. If that was there, would that show the height of the proposed house in relation to the adjacent house?
If it was there, but it wasn't.
Do you agree with the HPC that photos of building materials qualify as texture samples?
No, typically, you know, as an architect, I, I need the actual physical material, a sample, and that's why we have a library in my office, and I keep all that kind of stuff for different projects.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, I don't have any other questions.
Actually, I have no questions.
Yeah, we knew that.
Okay, I'm just curious, and I, I just thought I should have asked Mr. Weiss, but, so you said that you were a chairman of, and a member of, the HPC in DeKalb County?
City of Decatur.
City of Decatur, okay. What criteria, have you seen the criteria that the Cobb HPC is required to look at?
Yes.
What's different between what you use in Decatur? Was Decatur more specific in materials and some of those other things, or?
Decatur had, well, really six, but four very active historic neighborhoods, and typically depended on the neighborhood that we were, we had a COA on. Certain ones were four-sided review, certain neighborhoods were just a, whatever happened, whatever changed from the front street.
But that was spelled out in the code?
It was spelled out in the different codes.
The city code, right?
Yes.
Okay. And how does Decatur determine square footage on a typical building that's being constructed? Do they do heated space, or do they do everything?
Typically to the outside of the wall and everything that's on the lot.
Okay, so the conditions in Decatur that you all used for HPC considerations are different than they are here in Cobb?
I don't think so. I mean, typically, anything that's, anything that you build on a piece of property is heated or unheated, and all that's considered.
But what does, what is Cobb, what is Cobb County's rules? I mean, what are the code, what is the code saying Cobb? What I'm trying to get at is that we're using Decatur as an example here, and I think that it's different, what Decatur does versus Cobb.
Yeah, Decatur's a different kind of animal, though, I think. It's probably not a right, or maybe, I don't know, maybe it is, it's, it's a dense fabric in Decatur. We have, there's a lot going on down there.
Okay.
Yeah, well, just following what Commissioner Rod said here, and I'm not trying to ambush you, I'm just trying to read what I, what it says here in the original letter of April 9, 2018. I'm sorry, I'm on Tab, Tab 4 of the letter that we were given, the packs we were given today. It says, "The construction of a, this is the stipulation for this home, okay, that they're considering. Construction of a new two-story, two-story, single-family house on a vacant parcel, based on the submitted architectural plans, with a stipulation that the house be under 4,000 square feet," and here's the adverbial clause, "as calculated by Cobb County." Does that, "as calculated by Cobb County," would, even if you didn't like that, that stipulation, would it influence how you have seen the measurement of this house?
Well, I have to go back and figure out what Cobb County.
Exactly.
Considers square footage.
Right. I'm just saying that, look, I'm a layman, but you're an architect.
Right.
I look to the stipulate saying that the 4,000 square foot would be determined by Cobb County standards.
Mm-hmm.
And would you, basically, what I just read you, would you sort of like have the same understanding?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Question. I know Decatur being a, you know, historic city, such as Acworth where I'm from. I know Decatur being a, you know, historic city such as Acworth where I'm from, uh, very rarely do you have new construction, it's mainly just exterior things. Did you have any new construction during your tenure?
We did, we had a couple houses on Adam Street, um, which is right by Agnes Scott College, um, that were called into question quite a few times. Um, but you're absolutely right, vast majority of what we saw were renovations or additions, um, although the big trend in Decatur probably is, as y'all are experiencing up here, was, um, not quite tear downs, but potential tear downs where we're taking the roof off of a house and doing a major, major renovation to an existing structure, which completely changes the template at that point.
Did you have a square footage limitation in, in new construction that you can recall?
Well, it was all by the, the code, by the, by the zoning code, so it depended on what the, what the particular piece of property was zoned as. So Decatur has a couple of different zoning classifications and they've recently changed and gone to the Uniform Development Code, so it's, and while, while we were working on the, um, historic pres- while I was working on the Historic Preservation, all the zoning code was changing, so it, to answer your question, yes, but it was, it was under flux quite often.
Yeah, and you're various districts, I'm sure somewhere on the National Register, somewhere on the State Register, somewhere on City, I guess, or a combination of all of those, so you had a very defined area, uh, with, with no question of what the boundaries are as we appear to have here, correct?
Right, yeah, it was very well documented.
And were most of those on the National Register also?
Uh, yes, I think so, I mean, the, what we actually sat as commissioners and reviewed were properties that were changing through the COA process that were local historic districts as governed by the City of Decatur.
Got it, okay.
So there's a difference between that and the National Register.
Right, okay. But there were defined boundaries and guidelines-
Yes, sir.
-for each and all of those.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate your time this afternoon.
Sure, yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Schwartz, you have three minutes and approximately twenty-four seconds for your remainder case.
I cannot include, uh, like, discussion, like, look, add to my closing argument, because I don't have any more witnesses, I'll be using it for a cross-examine if I need to.
You have three-minute summation, none of the time that any of the commissioners have asked of your witnesses or asked of you is counted against your time.
Um, I don't have any further witnesses.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you saying I can use that time towards comments to, to address some of the issues that have been raised?
Sure, you have, it's your time.
Three minutes and twenty-four seconds as you want to.
Yeah, you can do whatever, you know, as long as it pertains to this issue, you can do whatever you want. If you thought that there was time that was not offered during your summation, your introductory comments that you want to make now, please, this is your time.
Or if you just want to include, you have six minutes and twenty-four seconds in your summation.
Yes, it's up to you, we just want to make sure that you know you have the opportunity to express all the comments that you want so we can make a, that you feel like you're properly informed.
But your summation would be after the- The county presents its evidence. Our presentation.
It struck me that there were some things that you didn't get, you weren't allowed to say during your introductory remarks that you might want to make now during this time, and that'll still leave you the three minutes for closing.
I know, when Mr. Clark was just going through the square footage, it was too fast, I think, for you to comprehend probably what these numbers mean, but if you look at tab three, it's broken down into a number of different, um, sizes. So the top one is the footprint of the structure, if you're including the garage, the workshop, the screen porch and some protruding exterior walls. The next number is if you take out those protruding exterior walls, and there are various different square footages depending on what is or is not counted. Uh, the, uh, the county has talked about as calculated by Cobb County, but when I look in the code, I don't see anywhere in the code where it defines square footage. And so it's impossible to know what they're meaning by square footage. Now, what they're, what they've talked about is the appraiser, um, differentiates between heated and unheated space. They still identify unheated space in the sketch tab, but they, um, they're assessing it, I assume, essentially on the, um, square footage of the heated space, which they consider livable. Um, now, the county does define floor area and that is in our position paper. We've set forth that definition of floor area and the, the floor area as defined under the Cobb code is either fifty-five sixty-seven or fifty-four twenty-five, that's as calculated as Alan Clark. That depends on whether the, uh, screen porch is considered to be an open porch. But even if you're taking out all of the garage, the workshop, the protruding exterior wall and the screen porch, essentially all of the unheated area, um, it would still comes to forty-four ninety-four and that's based on measuring the exterior of the walls, which is what the appraiser said is how they do it. And, um, if you look at the staff report, which I can provide you a copy of, but the staff report refutes their contention that they considered the entire structure. They're saying the rock house next door is approximately thirty-five hundred square feet with the other structures around thirty-five hundred square feet, um, thirty-one hundred to thirty-seven hundred square feet nearby. The proposed structure is to be approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet, which is similar to other homes in the district. There's nowhere where they are acknowledging that, um, there's a garage that's nine, over nine hundred square feet, that there's a workshop that's comparable size. Um, they're just essentially saying they don't need to consider it because it's not what Cobb County counts to be square feet. I would like to, uh, reserve the rest of my time for closing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Blury, you have approximately seventeen minutes, you subtract what you did for cross-examination.
Hello. On April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, the HPC held its public hearing to consider the Davidson application for the third time. After hearing, discussion and considering evidence, a motion was made to approve the application relying on Cobb County Code Sections sixty-six dash eighty-two and sixty-six dash eighty-five as directed by this board following the original appeal and remand. Incorporating staff's comments and subject to stipulations, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm talking to Cornelius. Incorporating staff's comments and subject to stipulations, the COA was approved by a vote of four, one. The COE, COA, as we were, uh, just read through, was issued to allow the construction of a new two-story, single-family home based on the submitted architectural plans with the stipulation that the house be under four thousand square feet as calculated by Cobb County. As we just heard, appellant makes much of the way that square footage is calculated. There are many ways to calculate square footage, we've talked about a multitude of them within the last hearings that we've had. When defining square footage in Cobb County, it is the heated and cooled space that is considered, as testified to by Mr. Dana Johnson, the Community Development Director on February twentieth, and as attested to by Stephen White in his February twenty-second affidavit. The language of the COA states, "Under four thousand square feet as calculated by Cobb County" and therefore, "The square footage is based on the heated and cooled space." The plans submitted with the application show that the heated and cooled space of the Davidson home is three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. The Tax Assessor's website shows that the size of homes vary within the district. Of course, not every home is going to be the same size within any designated area. Based on a sampling of homes in the district, property, properties range from three thousand seventy-eight square feet to ten thousand thirty-one square feet. This is the Miller's House, which is two properties over, a total of thirty, three thousand five hundred and twelve square feet. Seventy-nine Concord Road is across Nica Jack Creek, three thousand eight hundred square feet. One hundred Concord Road, three thousand seventy-eight square feet. Ten thousand thirty-one square feet. And the adjacent Rock House is a total of five thousand ninety-seven square feet. Even utilizing the numbers presented by Mr. Clark in the appellant's appeal, the Davidson home is within range of other homes in the district. And if you recall, the Davidson home is a one-story home from the front with a walkout basement which combines for the four thousand square feet. Appellants attempt to argue that the HPC did not have the authority to issue this approval because the plans differ from the approval. However, that is simply not the case. The plans submitted with the application show the square footage is three thousand seven sixty-eight as calculated by Cobb County, there was no modification of the plans or approval. And while the square footage is relevant, appellant is also correct in that the primary question here is how will the proposed home conform in design, scale or massing, building materials, setback and landscaping to other homes in the district. The audio of the April ninth HPC meeting shows that members discussed all of these issues. Compatibility with the surrounding area, how do they view this particular house and the size of the garage? It was clear from the discussion of the HPC that the HPC considered the entirety of the property when it voted to approve the COA, finding that the proposed residence within, was within an appropriate scale for the district. Appellant's appeal relies, as we've also heard, in large part on two words, immediate neighborhood. Failing to find this term in the county code, appellant pulls their definition from a nineteen eighty-five report, which, as was pointed out, is not part of the code. The report was prepared for consideration when the district was originally adopted. This shows the, um, the intact area, which is, has been repeatedly referenced, is the orange area, the smaller area, the white hatch area is the district that we have and that is being, um, referenced today. For two primary reasons, the district is the proper area to consider when reviewing a COA for a new construction home. First, section sixty-six dash eighty-five, where the term appears, seems to deal with the approval or denial of all COAs, but a closer reading shows that this section is intended to only apply to existing buildings. It states, "The commission shall approve the application and issue a certificate of appropriateness if it finds that the proposed material changes in appearance would not have a substantial adverse effect. Since it is impossible to make a material change to something that does not exist, this section can only be construed to refer to existing construction." The second sentence begins, "In making this determination," which prefer, refers to the proposed changes of the first sentence. "It is material changes in appearance, appearance to existing properties that must have a relationship to the exterior architectural style and features of other homes, of other structures or homes in the immediate neighborhood. Therefore, section sixty-six eighty-five applies only to COAs for existing buildings within the district." But, section sixty-six dash eighty-two, which deals with new construction, clearly identifies the district, not an immediate neighborhood. Second, even if section sixty-six dash eighty-five were intended to apply to both new construction and rehabilitation, statutory construction rules require that the statute be construed in relation to other statutes of which it, statutes of which it is a part, and all statutes relating to the same subject matter should be construed together, harmonized whenever possible, to ascertain the legislative intent and to give it effect. As Mr. Schwartz pointed out, the drafter of the code section used a different term. However, statutes should be construed in a way that give it effect rather than frustrate it. Reading the chapter together, it is the district that is of primary importance as well as the individual homes within the district, but not to the exclusion of others. To accept appellant's suggested definition would be arbitrary. A proper reading of this section to allow it to have effect would be to consider the definition of immediate neighborhood as the district if you consider that, that, uh, that statute or that code section even applies to new construction. There are, again, this, uh, depicts the entire district. The red dots show the historic structures that are in the, the district. The age and style of the homes within the district at the time of approval in nineteen eighty-six allow for the proposed home within the district. As described at this hearing, the existing, or excuse me, at the prior hearing, the existing district is ninety-three point oh-four acres and contains forty-two structures. Of those structures, only four historic homes are in the district. As you saw in the prior pictures, the homes located in the district are of varying architectural styles, contemporary to traditional. As one member of the HPC commented at the April ninth hearing, "The district as it is is what we inherited." While the design of the proposed home is more contemporary, in a district with a long period of significance and many different building styles, it is easier to make an argument for a more contemporary design. And as the prior photos depict, very contemporary homes already exist in the district. Appellant also contends that the application package was incomplete and should not have been reviewed by the HPC. However, as Ms. Moore, as Ms. Elliott pointed out, this is one of the most detailed and complete packages ever received during her tenure. Appellant alleges that five of the criteria, criteria are missing. As this, uh, slide shows, all but one of the criteria have been included. Mr. Davidson provided a detailed application package which contained sufficient information for the HPC to make a decision. As stated in the code, the standard of review for HPC decisions before your board is whether the HPC abused its discretion when reaching its decision, decision. Discretion is defined as the exercise of judgment based on what is fair under the circumstances and guided by the rules and principles of law. When reviewing a decision applying the abuse of discretion standard, this board must affirm the decision of the HPC if there is some evidence in the record to support the decision. The approval of the HPC, the approval was proper as the HPC considered the application in accord with section sixty-six dash eighty-two and sixty-six dash eighty-five to the extent that code section is even applicable. It considered the size and style of the proposed home in relation to other homes in the district. The evidence supports the approval. As there was no abuse of discretion on behalf of the HPC, I ask that this board uphold the decision of the HPC to approve the certificate of appropriateness of the Davidson residence. I also have here Ms. Abby Parks, chairman, chairwoman of the HPC, and Mandy Elliott, the Historic Preservation Planner, if there's questions for those folks.
Have any, the board have any questions of the aforementioned people? Commissioner Cupid, Commissioner, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's- There has been a lot of discussion regarding square footage and there was a number of four thousand square feet, which was set as a limit. However, in the materials that I read and the numbers that you shared, the square footage of properties or residential properties within the district exceed that. Can you tell me where that four thousand number came from and how material to the discussion?
The, the four thousand square foot, uh, square feet was, um, in the certificate of appropriateness. So this particular certificate of appropriateness is issued for a home that is no larger than four thousand square feet as calculated by Cobb County. So my, um, the, the photos that I showed simply showed that, I understand there is a wide, there's a, there's a difference, the, the way that people calculate square footage, but even in the district, there is a, a wide range of square footage and a home at four thousand square feet would be within that range.
Okay, and was the limit of four thousand square feet imposed by the applicant for the COA? Or was it imposed by the HPC? The HPC said, and how did they arrive to that when there are homes- The HPC said, and how did they arrive to that when there are homes that are smaller than 4,000 square feet but also exceed that number?
The square footage of the plans submitted were 3,768, if I recall.
Okay.
So because it's based on the submitted plans.
Okay.
And the submitted plans were also mentioned in the COA itself.
Okay, thank you.
Just when the appellant was talking, and this may not be your question, but they were talking about considering the way it appears, basically is what they're saying, the scale, including all-out structures, the porch, the protrusions, et cetera, et cetera. So what I understood in this particular one, the first floor, is not anywhere near 4,000 square feet. The basement contributes to the 4,000 square feet. So the scale to me was less than 4,000 if you only consider what's visible from the road. Is that your interpretation, what scale is?
Not being an architect, I'm going to say yes. But I would think, I mean, and this is a photo of the, a depiction of the property proposed from Concord Road, and as you can see, it's simply one story. Yes, it does look, it's two stories from the back, but it is one story here. So that's the depiction of what will be built along Concord Road.
But our calculations, according to the affidavit from Mr. White, is that it includes square footage. It's cooled or heated, which would be in the basement as well.
That's correct, in this particular property, yes.
And then they have submitted plans under 4,000, yet we keep hearing that they're 4,600. Is that a measurement from, well, never, that's not your problem. No, it was clear that it was, without anything, it was four something, number three.
4,494.
4,494 was their calculation, yet we have plans that say it's 37 something.
I mean, that's what the plans that were submitted show, yes.
One that's in mind, isn't the applicant an architect?
He is, yes.
So I would say, why don't we have the applicant come up and explain how he got to the square footage that he put on the application? He's an architect, same as the other guy that stood up, and so let's find out how he got his number.
Commissioner Rod, if I may.
I know, I know he wasn't, he wasn't one of the names that you gave us that was here.
No, but he is, he is able to participate in this, and after the presentation by Cobb County, he is planning on making himself available. He's wanting to make a presentation to the board and as well as make himself available for questions.
Okay, and the only reason I ask is because I remember from the first hearing that I thought that we were told that he was an architect, and I'm assuming that he submitted the application, so I'm guessing that's where the number came from, that because the HPC did not calculate it on their own, they took what was on the application, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that's the only reason I bring it up, because that's who made the number.
Yeah, and he will make himself available.
And I'm assuming if approved, and they're going to submit a site plan, that would have to be under 4,000 square feet, no matter what they do.
Right, if the, if he, if the plan to build is a much larger house, if it's more than the 4,000 square feet, then it has to go back for an amended certificate of appropriateness. So the certificate of appropriateness allows the construction of a fourth, up to a 4,000 square foot house.
So he said she said whatever the square footage is really doesn't matter, because all they can build is up to 4,000 square feet, period, so it doesn't really matter.
As calculated by Cobb County.
Correct, we are in Cobb County.
Debbie, what, as far as the other historic homes or neighboring district homes, has there been any other input or opposition or comments from anyone else in the adjacent area that's considered historic?
The appellant is the owner of this, the owners of this property, the McCutchins, and this, they are adjacent to the property that is going to be built. This home here is also very close, right just down the road, and I know she is a member of the Friends of the Covered Bridge that were, I mean, they're not the appellant's now, but they were protesting the certificate of appropriateness at the hearings, the HPC hearings.
He lives in the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Could we go back to the picture that showed the Rock House?
Yes.
I have one other question. Go ahead.
I want to let Commissioner Burrow finish her questions first.
I just want to know the process, what happens today if approved or if denied? Where does it go?
If, if you, whatever decision you all make today, the appellant and Mr. Davidson, depending on how it goes, has the opportunity to appeal to the Superior Court within 30 days, or of course, let the, let the decision stand.
Okay, but would it ever come back to us like zoning does once it goes? Debbie Blair, can you answer that?
It would not come back to y'all. This is not a zoning matter. So the court would.
Could the court remand it back to us?
Yeah, that's.
I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
I believe there could be a possibility where the court could potentially remand it back to you for consideration based upon some sort of order or instructions. It's outside the realm of possibility.
Okay, I too would like to hear from the owner.
Now we'll do the closing. Or do we hear Mr. Cushing first?
Mr. Davidson is on.
I thought we, my understanding was we did closing, and then we heard from Mr. Davidson.
Mr. Davidson would be first.
Okay, then the closings.
And then the way that the schedule, he'd have 10 minutes, and of course, any questions you would have would be exclusive of that. And then we would go back to the summation.
Okay.
My name is Roland Davidson. Yes, I am an architect, and I'll give you a little history of how we got here. Bought the property, originally it was a single piece of property. I bought the land from Mr. Peaster about 13 years ago, and I think the McCutchins bought the house, which is right next door. It has a shared driveway easement, so when they entered their property, they drive across our property to get to their land. Mr. McCutchins has, on several occasions, approached me to buy the land, and I've never, never expressed any interest to sell it because I want to build this house. Why am I here 13 years later? Well, after purchasing the land, we went through quite a recession in '08. Architecture was hit very hard by that recession, so I focused on keeping my business going. I am a principal in my firm, Lyman Davidson Dooly. Then after that, the recession quit about 2011, my wife passed away, so I went through a period of just adjusting to that. And so now here I am, I come off feet, ready to build my dream home. And so to talk a little bit about the square footage, even though I think we've kind of worned it out, as I was preparing my application, I worked very closely with Mandy. She gave me directions about, you know, what I need to include and how to do it. Did a very good job, got to talking about the square footage. I talked to Dana Johnson, the Development Director, and he says it's heated and cooled livable space was the square footage they wanted to see. If they wanted cubic footage, I could have given you that. If you wanted the drip line of the roof, I could have given you that. I'm not hiding anything, the house is what it is. And so I made my submittal based on the direction I got from the county. And so what I'm asking you all to do is just to consider where we are and to allow us to build on our land. I've been a Cobb County resident for 30 something years, paid taxes here, look forward to staying here, and look forward to building this house. So I welcome any questions or clarifications on that.
That's right.
To muddy the water some more, you mentioned another term, because we, so far up to this point, you've heard it, heated and cooled, and you added livable space. So what, for the board, what does that mean? Does that exclude like closets, or, I mean, is that possibly where we're getting this different number?
Could be. I do know livable space is not the walls. You know, the walls have thickness, they add up to square footage. So if you go by the appraisals approach, which is not what we are directed to do, it's the outside face of a wall, and I think the appellant's been talking about appraised value. Well, that will happen once the house is built and I'm on the tax record, right?
Right, well, let me ask you this, is there anything that is heated or cooled that is not livable space?
Yeah, like a linen closet.
So closets are not considered livable space?
Right.
Okay, what else might not be considered livable space?
That would be it.
Okay, are there a lot of closets in this house?
No. I calculated it, let me give you a little other background. I did look at the appeal and looked at the shaded areas that they put in their square footage calculation. On the lower level, they included crawl space. Well, I know that's not heated and cooled, so there was some variance in how those numbers show up. We did ours on a computer. We draw a line around the livable space, the heated and cooled space. It calculates it down to like, you know, three decimal points, so it's very accurate, and we do everything with our CAD systems.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
At this time, Chairman, each party would be allowed for time for a summation. Mr. Schwartz, you can either go first or you have a time to reserve if you want to do that.
Yeah, I'll go last.
Okay. With that, Ms. Blair, you have.
I thought it was three minutes.
You have three minutes, but we, Mr. Schwartz had asked for additional time.
But he saved some of his time.
And so did she.
I didn't hear that.
I also plan to ask the board to exercise their discretion under the Appeal Process Rule D to.
Provide additional time upon request, so I'll ask that now so that if Deb wants additional time also, that it can be fair, that she knows, but I just feel like there's so many issues here that I would appreciate a little bit more time to go through them and let the board understand what our position is here.
Unless I hear otherwise, I think the board is pretty well informed about all the issues. We've been hearing it now for almost an hour and a half, and pretty much from your side. So I don't, I don't buy the argument that your side has not presented ample opportunity to make very clear what your issues are. I think the board has heard them, and I think we should go forward the process as we advertised at the outset. So I'll let Debbie go with her comments for three minutes.
First, thank you for your time today, for your questions, for listening. As a reminder, the standard of review to be applied today is whether or not the HPC abused its discretion when it approved the certificate of appropriateness. The primary consideration is whether there was some evidence before the HPC to support its decision. The appellant would have you believe that the full size of the home was not considered. It was fully considered based on the discussions of the HPC on April 9th. Appellant states that the plans are materially different from the submitted plans. They are not. The COA clearly states the square footage of the approval, that of the approval is limited to 4,000 square feet. But even beside that, the most important thing, we've talked about square footage, and there are differences, but it is the massing, the scale, as stated in the code. What is this property going to look at, look like compared to other homes in the district? And it is comparable to those homes in the district. Appellant would have this board find an abuse of discretion because the HPC considered the district as the area of consideration and not the intermediate neighborhood, which appellant arbitrarily defines as the intact historic district, which, as shown, is not a term in our code. The code specifically refers to the district for new construction. Appellant contends that nonhistoric homes in the district cannot be relied upon. There are 42 structures in the district, however, only four of those are historic homes. The district was adopted with various home styles, and the proposed home conforms with the overall district. The application package was complete and contained all and sufficient information for the HPC to render its decision. There was sufficient evidence before the HPC to support its decision. The commission considered all of the evidence and testimony before it and properly approved the Davidson application. I ask that you uphold the decision of the HPC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you look at Tab 16 of what I submitted today, that shows the backside of this house, and that is visible from within the historic district. So the front side of the house is one story, but the back side of the house is larger than one story, and it's visible from Covered Bridge Drive and also from the McCutchins house. In terms of the question about why does it really matter about what the square footage is, in part, it's because it's a procedural issue, that the Historic Preservation Commission only has the authority to approve or reject an application for a COA, unlike this board, which can approve, reject, or modify. So so much of what we're talking about here today are procedural issues, and it goes beyond the scope of just about this one property, because the Historic Preservation Commission is going through these review processes without really understanding what the code requires. So we're not asking you to make any design decisions today. When we went in front of the HPC, we explained to them why we thought the design of this house was not compatible with the surrounding historic area. That's not what we're asking you to make a determination on, but what we're saying is they ignored the comments from Jerry Weiss on why it's not compatible, but also there's other problems procedurally that they're not following. And so, first of all, there's nothing on the site plans that show, that show crawl space. If there is crawl space in there, it's probably approximately 200 square feet, but you heard him talking about that he's not counting the walls, where when the county comes in, they're saying what they're comparing this to, they're looking at the exterior measurements of other houses. But again, we would say what the county is looking at is not relevant for purposes of historic preservation. The Historic Preservation Commission cannot consider what's going on on the inside of a house. It's beyond the scope of their review, but they have to consider what the exterior looks like, and that's the entire exterior. And again, when you look at the staff report, they're saying this is a 3,800 square foot house, and when you look at the transcript, which is an unofficial copy of the transcript is in, at Tab 15, there's, they never consider the garage. They're just saying, well, because the county doesn't define that as square footage, it's outside the scope of what they are considering. The Building Department doesn't measure square footage, and if you look at Tab 9 of what I submitted today, this shows when you submit an application for a building permit, they're asking for all square footage. They're asking for square footage that's heated and livable. They're asking for unfinished basement, finished basement, attic, garage, porch, patio, et cetera. And so they're asking you to identify all the square footage. That didn't happen here, and I think that would be helpful if the HPC did ask for that type of information. But if you look on, lower on Tab 9, it says, "Permit clerks do not read plans or determine square footage." So essentially, there's no, there's no next step for them to look at this and determine, well, never mind on that, but. If you look at Tab 6, it's the COA submittal criteria. It says it's the criteria listed below comprise the minimum material necessary for review. And there was no, if you look at 8A, there were no elevation drawings in scale showing relationship to structures immediately adjacent. That would have to include some drawing where you see the adjacent structure, so you can see the scale of this compared to the adjacent structure. It wasn't there. But then again, when you look at 8C, it says, "Site plan showing building footprint." So again, they're looking for footprint under the submittal criteria. They're supposed to be providing, you know, they expressly uses the term footprint, but when you look at the transcript and you see what they looked at, it was only the purported 3,800 square feet that this house was stated in the text of the application. And then again, it says texture samples, that's, you can use your discretion on what texture samples is, but we would propose that it's not a. it's not a photograph. But again, getting to whether this should be considered, if you look at 85A, it specifically uses the term immediate neighborhood. Yet at the HPC hearing, they expressly refused to consider any area that's not the historic district. So they say, quote, "We are a commission to review certificates of appropriateness within a historic district. We are not defined neighborhoods or anything other than the exterior of the district." That's one of the commissioners. The purview we have is the whole district, not an area of the district, and more like that. There's just no consideration of any distinction here. And if I may just finish up with another sentence, is that because this is, there's so many issues, I think, that you are hearing for the first time. And I think also there's so many issues here that the HPC is probably thinking about for the first time. There's just, there is some, the code, I think, probably could be better by either defining immediate neighborhood or being consistent with the terms that it's using. But as long as there's two different terms, there has to at least be some acknowledgement of what that means. And if they want to say the immediate neighborhood is the same thing as the intact, I mean, as the historic district, and they can come up with some justification for that, then that could be okay, maybe within their discretion. But when they just say, well, because it's not defined, we're not even going to consider it, and we're just going to ignore the criteria under 85A, that is an abuse of discretion as well as considering the nonhistoric homes and relying on the nonhistoric homes for compatibility. The whole purpose of the Historic Preservation Ordinance is to protect the historic character of the area. And they should be looking at the other historic homes within the district to understand what that historic character is. If there were design guidelines, then it would be easier for that to happen. But in this board's remand of the first COA, you said that that section, 85A, applies even though there are no design guidelines. So they have to be looking at what is the historic character of the area, and how does this fit in with that? And I appreciate your time.
And I do want to say your product was outstanding. Thank you for this book. You actually have two products, remarkable. So thank you for that effort.
May I tender those...
Yeah, I was about to address that if we do.
I'd like to tender exhibits 1 through 17 and the staff report. I also included two photographs at the end. One was a photo of the area, and one was of the Gann House that was covered in the house.
Can we put it on the record, please?
Yes.
To the extent this will be an appeal, I mean, to make sure we have, and Ms. Blair too, if there's any, we'll address any conclusions of the record that you want to include.
I would like to tender exhibits 1 through 17 that were identified as appellate's exhibits. And then there was an aerial photo of the area outlined in red as what was identified in the nominating report as the intact historic area with arrows pointing to the various structures there.
Mr. Schwartz, could we identify that Ms. Clark is 18 then, that photo?
Yes.
All right.
And then 19 would be a photo of the Gann House with the historic barn that's used as a one-car garage. And then 20 would be the staff report.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the staff report? You have that? Okay.
Thank you.
Any objection, Ms. Blair?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any additional inclusions into the record that isn't already before the board?
No.
May I just clarify that the transcript that we submitted is an unofficial transcript. It's just something that someone typed out from...
You mentioned that during your comments.
All right, Commissioner Cupid, I'll let you lead this discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to begin my statements by starting where you left off, in that I think both sides have done a tremendous job in arguing your side of this matter. There was a lot of documentation that we've received. In fact, the suitcase my neighbor here thought I brought for zoning, and I brought it for today. That's all the materials that I've been gathering over the past half of the year to address this case. Before us today, I've jotted down the five issues here, which were presented in the appellate's position paper. Number one is whether the HPC abused its discretion by not considering the full size of the proposed home. Number two, the HPC abused its discretion by approving a certificate of appropriateness that differed materially from the submitted plans. Number three, the HPC abused its discretion by refusing to consider the relationship of the proposed home to the exterior architectural style and pertinent features of the immediate neighborhood, which appellate contends is the intact historic area of the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District. Number four, the HPC abused its discretion by relying on compatibility with nonhistoric homes in the historic district. And number five, the application did not include items that are required by the county's COA submittal criteria. I'm going to work backwards on this list. With respect to number five, the appellate, which is the county in this matter, or the Cobb County Historic Preservation Commission, did provide evidence that items required were submitted. And number four, the HPC abused its discretion by relying on compatibility with nonhistoric homes in the historic district. So I'll start my points there. The district is a broad area that was shared, has 42 homes and over 90 acres. And in some of the pictures that the board reviewed, the homes varied in appearance. And it is difficult to exclude some versus others in this matter, particularly when I believe there are about four historic homes that are listed in the National Register. And even those homes vary in appearance and in size from each other. So I think there is a significant layer of discretion that's used to determine how this proposed home fits in with those four different homes. And I don't necessarily consider myself an expert in evaluating what those differences are. They look different to me in appearance, but we do rely on our Historic Preservation Commission to consider various criteria in determining that. And I think the record shows that they considered the character of those four homes, and in fact, the broader homes in that area in determining whether or not this home fit. Buried in paper here, some of the homes that were in that area did have geometric designs. Some had very traditional home designs. Some were historic nature in their design. And in my layman's discretion and brief observation of this matter, that this home that's being proposed combines all of those things and is not only just in appearance, but there is a significant amount of documentation that the appellate provided to show how they considered various aspects in the current historic homes, as well as the adjacent homes, and how they arrived at the structure that they provided before the board. Number three, we have the HPC abused its discretion again by refusing to consider the relationship with the proposed house to the exterior of homes in the immediate neighborhood. And this is where we start talking about the intact historic area. And I think Commissioner Oats' questioning about what is that, I think reflected what some of my concerns were about relying on something which really hasn't been officially defined by our board. And it's difficult for us to exclude this one area versus looking at the entire district. And if I were to look at the term provided and looking at the layout of the homes, the closest home that I have to compare that I would say is the immediate area is the one home that's adjacent to the area. And then you start looking at, should this home be able to differ from this one home in a neighborhood? And I think to some credit of the applicant, and if you look at how many stories are on this home, this home, I can't say how closely he tried to marry the adjacent home, but I think it would be extremely limiting to say that this new home, if you were to consider that home to be in the immediate area, should replicate that home. Number two, the HPC abused its discretion by approving a certificate of appropriateness that differed materially from the submitted plans. It is my belief in looking through the documents in that the HPC actually did not modify plans, but that they assessed the plans that were provided by the applicant. So if anybody modified it, it was the appellate, and there's nothing that keeps the, I'm excuse me, not the appellate, the applicant, nothing keeps him from submitting plans that conform to him addressing the concerns that were raised during the appeal. And I think that was positive for him to do that, for him not to go back and submit the same plan, for him to say, hey, I took into account what was shared during that appeal hearing, and this is my, this is my plan, taking into consideration the concerns of my neighbors and those who are interested and advocates of keeping the area historic. Finally, I'm going to go to the first point. The HPC abused its discretion by not considering the full size of the proposed home. This, I think, was the main point of the remand that we provided back to the Historic Preservation Commission, in that we did find that there was some abuse and discretion. And this was not necessarily based on that particular guideline, but it was based on the use of a wrong, of a wrong standard, the U.S. Secretary of Interior standards of rehabilitation. So on remand, we asked for them to go back and look at section 6682 and 6685. And in that, the HPC was expect or consider whether the structures conform in design, scale, building materials, setback, and landscaping to the character of the district. And to also look at whether or not there was an adverse effect on the aesthetic, historic or architectural significance and value on the historic property of the district. Again, in looking at the record, the unofficial transcript, and also the appellate's, the appellate's documentation provided. Excuse me, I need to find the transcript. The transcript is provided in tab 15. There's evidence that the appellate did consider the character or the factors that we asked for them to consider in this appeal. And the one issue that's of contention with the appellate is the size and scale of the By not considering the full size of the proposed home. I think this is the main point of contention, and we beat this horse considerably over the hour and 45 minutes of this appeal. When we had our appeals, when we had our initial appeals hearing, there was, it was not clear what was considered the actual square footage of the home. And I remember us walking away not really knowing that and asking staff to take a look at that. And we now have documentation asserting what that square footage is. And I find that to be consistent with different online websites that I went to for Realtors about what is considered square footage of a home. And they typically do look at finished areas that are heated and cooled, and particularly those that are the square footage of what is above grade. And I don't see how the size of the home that was provided by the applicant is not consistent with what Cobb County uses as their standard and what is basically used as a general standard in considering the square footage of the home. But what we've directed them is not just look at the square footage, but to look at scale, and to look at the general character. So even if there was some discretion upon, or if there was some, if there was not a point of clarification on the general square footage, I think, looking at the scale of the home, looking at the design of the home, and all of these other factors, I don't see how one factor is given greater priority to rule out consideration of all the other factors. They're all taken, and they're all considered jointly, or maybe it's just too late for me. They're all considered together, and I just don't see how the size of this proposed home, even if there was a point of contention about it, really would cause the other factors to not be considered. But here, I mean, I think it's clear, even if we take the applicant's or the appellate's argument, which I think is provided in, losing the tab of square footage of the homes.
Six?
Three, thank you.
Three, there you go.
Again, if we look at the appellate's square footage, which he provided, which again is consistent to what is general practice, if you're looking at square footage of 4,500 square feet, that seems to be consistent with other homes in the area. And I tried to get at whether or not 4,000 was just a bar to the square footage allowed in the district, but it seems as if that square footage was self-imposed by the applicant himself. This was not a bar that was limited by the Historic Preservation Commission on its own. So with that, I just don't see a grounds for why we should not approve the certificate of appropriateness for this applicant. Do you think that we have fleshed out these issues significantly? We've improved our assessment of the code and how the HPC operates to look at new construction differently from homes that are being modified. And the applicant took into consideration the concerns of the community and how he approached this appeal. And hopefully, what we have here today is a product that better reflects the spirit of why we have a historic preservation in the county. Just some very brief remarks. There is some concern that having this home will limit the community's ability to be on the National Register. I did read, there are a couple of documents from this state about this area's ability to qualify for it, and I just have not seen overwhelming evidence to provide that this area would be eligible even without this home being built. So I understand the concern. I just don't see overwhelming evidence to consider that.
So Bill, can we just vote in support of, or opposition to the commissioner's point? Or how do we do this now?
Well, if I make Mr. Cupid, I mean, from what I understand, what you've said, I think it'd be clear, if you make it the form of a motion, that you would uphold the HPC's decision and then deny the appellate's appeal.
So moved.
Call a question. Pass is five to zero. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.